Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming out. I'd like to welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the Board of Education. It is Monday, January 25th, 2021. It is 6:05 PM. Let the record show that all board members are present. If you will, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Board, you each have an agenda before you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Jeff, Jared, any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved. First up this evening are recognitions. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Glass.
Of course, this is the highlight of our evening, recognizing our terrific Tigers from each of our buildings. And we're pleased to do that for the month of January. This is, as you well know, selected to receive this award based on their leadership to others, their leadership and their scholarship. We also would like to recognize their parents, Miss Talon. So would you bring them in as we call them forward?
Yes, we'll start with Will Skelton. Alma Strata Elementary, Will Skelton, first grade, son of Kara and Michael Skelton. Will is a very hard worker. He exhibits great character to his classmates and teachers. He shows good citizenship in all areas of his school day. Congratulations, Will. We are so proud of you.
That's a sharp dressed man.
I'll go as superintendent.
Are there smiles under those masks?
As good as we can.
Thank good luck for the teeth.
Kristen, was it Annabelle Wagner? Is that?
Yes.
Alma Strata Elementary, Annabelle Wagner, second grade, daughter of Sarah and Jason Wagner. Annabelle's character aligns with the six pillars of character at Alma Strata. She's very studious and displays a positive attitude in and out of the classroom. Annabelle is a hard worker who always does her best, is a great friend to all students in the classroom, and loves to help the teacher. Blanchard? Blanchard Elementary, Elijah Pfeifer, kindergartner, son of Danielle and Christopher Pfeifer.
Come on down.
Elijah embodies everything you could ask for in a student and representative of Cape Public Schools. He's an exceptional role model for all of his classmates and peers. His heart is full of love, and he truly believes that every day is the best day ever. His love of learning and life is contagious. We're so very proud of you, Elijah. Congratulations. Okay.
Give me a second.
Okay. Levi Gilman, first grade, son of Chelsea and John Gilman. Levi is positive and full of energy and smiles every day. He is helpful and always willing to lend a hand. He encourages his friends to do their best and expects the same from himself. He's a brilliant reader and is always looking to bless others. There are not enough adjectives to describe how wonderful and human Levi is. Franklin Elementary, David Guey. Franklin Elementary, David Guey, second grade, son of Zing Fang Zhang. David is an exemplary student. As a virtual learning student, he has never missed a Zoom meeting or an assignment. He's shown a deep understanding of the content covered by taking the initiative to do extra research and writing reports, stories and book reports that were not assigned. David's pleasant personality and wit, along with his kindness toward his classmates, have made him a true terrific Tiger.
Take your mask off. We'll get another picture. You take your mask off.
Perfect.
There you go.
Very good.
Fantastic.
Jefferson Elementary, Javion Brown, third grade, son of Alexandra Brown. Javion is the perfect example of a terrific Tiger. He is kind, responsible, loving, caring, respectful and intelligent. The list can go on and on. He was voted class president by his peers, and he proudly takes on that job every time he enters the building. Javion cares for his classmates and is always willing to help anyone in need. Thank you, Javion, for being the daily example of what it means to be a terrific Tiger. Central Middle School, Cora McDougall, fifth grade, daughter of Emma and Scott McDougall. If you've not had the privilege of meeting Cora, do it. She is the one who is always smiling. Yes, you can tell she's smiling even with a mask on. Cora is a super sweet young lady who's a friend to everyone. She works very hard in all subjects, and yes, with a smile on her face. She has some pretty incredible stories to share also. Keep up the good work, Cora. Central Middle School, Ariana Mungl, fifth grade, daughter of Beth and Jeff Mungl. Ariana is an amazing student and person in general. She's kind to others and is helpful. She exceeds following the CMS expectations every day. She's a joy to have as a student and makes the classroom a better place. Remember to imagine with all your mind, believe with all your heart, and achieve with all your might. Cape Junior High School, Georgia Matukowicz, eighth grade, daughter of Lena and Thomas Matukowicz. Georgia is a kind person with a big heart. There have been many occasions where Georgia's gone out of her way to include others in the room. She has come to the defense of other students by offering an open mind and telling others not to speak negatively as someone who's just not understood. She's able to do this in the most gentle of ways, demonstrating how easy it is to offer kindness. She is studious, hardworking and fun to be around. Terry W. Kitchen Junior High School is made better by her presence.
Coach, you have any more?
Central High School, Marcus Gibson, twelfth grade, son of Erica and Terry Gibson. Marcus is a careful thinker and very conscientious to the utmost in regards to academics, achievement and personal character. He's not only an excellent student, but he's also personally delightful, engaging and most comfortable with himself. CHS is a better place with Marcus here. Central Academy, Willie Ruffin, tenth grade student of Adrienne Dorsey Rivers. Willie is a fantastic student, but what stands out most is his willingness to help others academically and emotionally. Willie is a ray of sunshine in our halls, and our school is better because of him. Thank you for everything you do, Willie.
So this is my favorite time of year. I get to recognize the seven board members that serve this district. They do a fantastic job, and they each bring a certain skill set and perspective to the school district. And I can't thank them enough for all the work that they do. They don't get a lot of thanks for it. They put in a lot of hours, a lot of training. They have to listen to me a lot. But I can't think of another board that I would rather serve for than these folks right here. They do a tremendous job. So I'll read the script. That was all script. So this is School Board Recognition Week, February 14th through the 20th. But we are taking this opportunity to celebrate our dedicated board members tonight. The people you see here in front of you volunteer countless hours each year to help us. These public servants do not receive any compensation for their tireless efforts. Still, they freely give their time to serve our students and staff. At this time, on behalf of all of us here at Cape Public Schools, I would like to say thank you for investing your time and talent in public education. It is every single child's right to have access to a high-quality education. Every time you sit in the board meeting, making decisions for our district, you are ensuring that all students are ready to get it. We do not do this without you. Thank you very much, Board. With that, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. President.
Well, thank you for your contribution. All right, next up, we have information proposal and comments from the audience. Did you have any with us this morning? No? All right, so we will move on to informational reports. First up is Board President's Report. Mine is short and sweet. First off, just Happy New Year to everyone. Hope everyone had safe holidays with their family and everyone in the family is doing well, enjoying this nice, cool winter weather. Also, we'd like to thank our staff and administration for getting us through the first semester. And I don't know how, but by the grace of God, we were able to keep all of our buildings open except for one week at the high school, while we had a clean schedule there. But all of our students are doing well and back in school where they should be. And so I really appreciate the efforts by everybody to make sure that that continues. And with that, I will turn it over to Superintendent for any.
So a lot of folks have been asking me, when will the teacher get or educators get their vaccinations? We're still waiting for that tier to be activated. We continue to work with our health officials and wait for the green light for them. We have been contacted by St. Francis. We feel like they're the ones that are going to serve our teachers and give them the vaccinations. So we do have that information. We're just waiting for that tier to be activated. I did have the opportunity to go down and work with the Health Department this past Friday because I wanted to see for myself kind of what the process looked like. They had it down to a T. I mean, it was a very seamless process. This was a group of individuals, 67 and older, and they had nothing but compliments for the Health Department. So I just want to pass that on. They're doing a fantastic job. The Air Force JRO TC Cyber Patriot Team competed in Nationwide Cyber Patriot Challenge over the weekend. Our team entered the weekend ranked number one in the state of Missouri and 45th in the nation. It will be a couple of weeks before we know the final results. Still, Colonel Gooden continues to do a phenomenal job leading this group of talented students. They are something else. I mean, they're doing just a great job. The top 13 get to go on to nationals. So we're hoping that we break through that. That'd be great for a program that's really in its infancy still. You know, it's third year for the program, so doing a great job. One last lighthearted comment tonight. I just want to mention that snow is in the forecast, meaning there is a chance, there is a chance, no pressure, Randy, that we will get to see the snow day video.
Yes.
He's speechless.
There is a video.
And that's all I got.
Not that I pray for snow, but I always look forward to the video. So next up, we have program evaluations. In this month, we have technology evaluation, which was sent out previously. And we have Mr. Hall here this evening. If anyone has any specific questions regarding the evaluation or the program?
I was just curious on the ratio for technician staff based upon the COVID and the virtual learning. Have you seen any changes? I know you had the recommendation on here. Is that updated?
Sorry, there hasn't been anything from the state that I've seen as far as changing the ratios due to home students, home distance learning versus in-person. But we have seen actually a decrease in our number of support cases that have been needed over at the junior high. Matter of fact, I was working with Mr. Cook on that a little bit earlier last week. And we're adjusting hours of our lunch line there, the Tigers at Home Help Desk, because I think all the students from the first semester have got it pretty well down pat. And even the ones from the second semester, they were taught that in their classroom, and they've had trainings and they've gone through all this stuff. And it's really been not a completely seamless transition, but so much smoother than I think anyone even anticipated. Most of the stuff that we've seen are physical issues with the devices, maybe memory or cracked screen or something like that that just can't be avoided. But all in all, it's kind of about the same number of tickets total district-wide. We may have seen a few more, but unfortunately, I can't say that all of our tickets have gone down because we had a bunch of kids go home to learn. We're still running fairly high number of tickets, unfortunately. But we are addressing those just as soon as we can. But we have been able to run almost all of our Tigers at Home Help through the junior high lunch line, which has been amazing. We've had to make a few accommodations at certain buildings, you know, leave devices at an office here, an office there, something like that for them to come through and pick up. But the parents have been amazing. The staff's been amazing. Everything has worked, I would say, as planned, which rarely ever, ever happens. But this time, it's really gone well. I would like to say that our number of tickets has just plummeted, but overall, but unfortunately not. We're still having to support those in-person, and we're also taking on more responsibilities as this goes on, which actually, you know, offsets that, people working on the tickets.
Anyone else have any questions for Mr. Hall? Thank Brian.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Academic Services Report.
Yeah, we have Mr. Cook with us tonight from the junior high school. And we also have a very special guest, Ashley Seiler from Big Brothers Big Sisters with us, ABC Today. And they're going to talk about a new mentoring pilot program that they're proposing out at the junior high. In fact, we're not proposing it anymore. We're moving forward with it. So tell us a little bit about it, and come on up, and we may have a few questions for you.
All right. Well, good evening. It's a pleasure to be with you all this evening. I know Dr. Binion asked if we could maybe just talk a little bit about ABC Today for some of the newer board members who don't know a lot about the work that we do and how it led us to this conversation today. So I'm going to do that briefly. But I just want to say it is the partnership that we have with Cape Public Schools at Big Brothers Big Sisters has just been so instrumental to the work of our entire agency and even the nation. And some folks may not realize that, but they really look to Cape Girardeau as the innovation hub for the work that we do. So without the district, that just wouldn't be possible. So I just want to mention that. But we started ABC Today because of Cape Public Schools in partnership with them. And about 2012, we sat down with folks from the district who were really education experts and said, how can we really look at the difference that we're making in lives of students? And so they came back to us and said, well, look at their attendance, their behavior and their course performance. So that's where ABC got its name, is really because of Cape Public Schools. And so in 2012, with Ms. Krista Turner, we opened our first ABC Today school at Jefferson Elementary. And our work there is really, how do we look at data? How do we bring together community partners? And then how do we support and celebrate kids who are doing great? But then how do we also help with interventions or supports for kids who may need additional supports? So I love that you all started with celebrating kids because that's what we do first, and we learned that from you all too. So long story short, now we're in all nine schools, working with over 70 community partners, all of the school principals, to really understand how do we help support the great stuff that they're doing there? How do we celebrate kids? How do we recognize them for their achievements? But then also, how do we help where there's additional supports needed? And so Mr. Cook, coming on board. And in the summer, I get the pleasure of working with him. My first question to him is, what are you thinking? What can we do to help you? And he said, you know, I'm new here, but this is what I'm thinking. I know that we have a gap that's been left. And so literally from that moment on, we've been having this conversation about how do we help fill this gap of helping support more young boys in the schools? And so I guess that's what's led us here today. So I'll let him give you a little bit more about his vision. And our conversation has been ongoing with the school district since that time. I mean, we've been in a lot of conversations and really walking this in partnership with them, so.
Thank you, Ashley. Hi, thank you all for having us here. It is a pleasure, as Ashley stated, and for you all to just give us the green light before we even had to talk to you or pitch it. We really appreciate that. Ashley asked me in the summertime before school had even started, you know, hey, I just want to get to know you. I'm an ABC Today leader, and I'm a Big Brothers Big Sisters employee. What is something that you think is a need at the school? And one of the things that we had talked about after I had taken the position was we had HYM-C a mentoring program for our boys at the junior high, and they were left without that and for several months. Now it's been, I believe, a year or right about at that point. All of you know, I don't have to state any research or any facts for everyone in here to agree that mentors are key to any of our success. And if we don't have people that are leading and helping us with direction, we're lost, whether you're an adult or a youth, and especially boys that don't have fathers in their homes. So one of the things that we talked about was how can we support that? And I said, I don't know exactly what HYM-C did, but I love the idea. And this is something that you all are experts in, and you have an expertise in mentoring. So what could we do to make that happen? And the natural partnership with all these community members and everyone hearing that, they started to have different conversations, which led us to the time that we're at now. And we really want to get started with this, even though we want to make it more for next fall. Our vision right now at this moment in time is to serve 12 students. And we have three men that will be mentors, and our kids will have direct access to them in our building. I don't know how much of that that you all provided, but this spring, we want to get started with our kids having at least four encounters with their mentors a month. And then next fall, we want to add more children to that so that they can grow in those relationships. And the idea being that this could be a sustainable mentorship with employees that are already in our district, learning from mentors that have a national model from Big Brothers, Big Sisters and ABC Today, so that our kids get that enrichment in their lives or that support when they need it or that person they can, you know, lean on a shoulder or get advice from instead of the other youth beside them that's just trying to figure it out with them. And we're really excited about that. The three guys that we got have a lot of life experience, very different backgrounds that our kids could be attracted to with backgrounds in sports and, of course, years of an education, some of them, and then some of them are younger as well. And I plan on taking a role in that. And we want to do home visits and get really involved with those kids and get to know them. And then serve them with some needs that they may have or some wants that they may have and provide opportunities with our community partners that they wouldn't get to give them. have and provide opportunities with our community partners that they wouldn't get, to enrich their lives in some different ways, whether that's a college visit or taking them on a hike or going to a location or something that would be a dream opportunity for them that they wouldn't get otherwise. So with that said, does anyone have any questions or is there any other details that you're interested in with our short or our small pilot this spring and then what we're looking ahead to for next fall?
The more long-term, we had talked about, and I have been in every meeting that you have, but we had talked about ABC having a liaison there to support those three men as well, right?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to make sure we were still on track with that.
Definitely. So right now, we're in the planning phases of what a job description would look like for that person and the right criteria to determine who we would look for. But next fall, what we want to do is have a Big Brothers, Big Sisters employee in our building three to four days a week that would be training and working and serving our three mentors on more of a full-time basis, if you will. And then again, getting all that networking that Big Brothers, Big Sisters already have and bringing that directly into the junior high, piloting this program and serving more like 20-plus students next fall. And St. Louis, their chapter there is going to be following and involved in our planning process and looking out at what we do as the first time this is being done in schools. So I am ecstatic about that opportunity to grow and learn and serve our kids in another way that they wouldn't have otherwise.
The model is under academic services report, if you all want to see it. It's number six under informational reports.
My question is, one, you say they can meet with the mentors one time a week. How long is that one time a week?
So that'll be a check-in right now is what our plan, and that could be 15 to 25 minutes where they check in on that student and see how they're doing, have a conversation, just that mentor and let that naturally happen. Nothing planned with that. And then the other three encounters at a minimum that they would have is once a month, we would do a home visit with a mentor, going directly to their mentees' home and getting to know their family and their environment better so that they can serve that child and that family more. And then we also plan on having a group activity, whether it's a small group or the whole group together, once a month. And then one field trip. And we're not going to start those until March or April to have a little more time to plan, but one field trip per month this spring, starting now. And then we'll see where that goes and learn from that to plan for next fall.
I was just wondering, how much of what you guys will do will mirror what the previous group did with those young men?
Sure, sure. And I can't speak to that because I wasn't involved in that piece, but that's our plan for now. Yeah.
I think the other thing that is in, I think, the report that is, that Dr. Binion said he was going to be including is that youth voice is something that we are, Big Brothers, Big Sisters completely committed to and something that we've talked to the district about really being important to us, is identifying where do youth and families have voice in this and us not prescribing what this looks like, as this is a pilot for the spring and really trying to then identify and learn things this spring to roll out what this will look like for fall. So if a kid or student needs additional time, then that 15-minute check-in, we think we're going to make time for that.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any update? I know we have done another mentorship with Danny Reese and his Christian Boxing Academy. Is there any update on that?
I don't know.
I don't mean to put you on the spot.
Yeah, yeah, you're okay. What I'm doing, to be very straightforward and open, is you all know Danny Reese and what he runs with Christian Boxing Academy. I refer students on a regular basis. If I have a student that comes to my office for discipline and having that community partnership is awesome. And then I learn a little bit about that child and hey, they were doing great during football season. I've got three kids I could name right now that come to mind that had better grades and they were getting after or doing the right things and making good decisions and doing good things on the football field. And they don't have that right now because they didn't have basketball or whatever this winter and they need that outlet. Hey, we got somebody here that's a community partner that wants to take on students and get them a workout and get them going and have a great message for them and do some of that. And Danny's been a huge help with that. I've taken several kids over myself and/or had their parents go because they wanted to introduce themselves just to do the boxing. And then we also have a second program going on at Christian Boxing Academy with the truck repair group. And we only have a couple of kids that signed up and committed and are doing that regularly, but I've heard nothing but good things and the kids are really enjoying it and they're going consistently. The two boys that we have that have started that program, they're learning how to repair a truck and they're getting, they can tell you a lot about it and they're excited about it and they look forward to it.
It's actually a mini Bigfoot that's been featured in magazines, right?
That's right. Yeah, that's right.
Just to let you know, Mr. Cook, I do support Big Brothers and Big Sisters, okay?
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you all very much.
Thank you all.
We appreciate everything you're doing.
All right, next we have our IT update with Mr. Russell.
This is it, right here. This is exactly it. So we've, like I told you guys last time, we've been building on Canvas and now, just this last week, we've released it to our beta testers. And we haven't really told every teacher, but they can actually all log into it right now because we wanted to get some things out of the way first before we just told everybody. But I think we're good enough to do that now. So Mr. Long, whenever you're ready for that, ready to go. He's been wanting to talk about Canvas for a while. And so I just wanted to show you this, the course that I've been working on here this last week, just so that you guys can see some of the things that Canvas can do. And so for our teachers, I'm doing a standalone course, so if they wanted to go through and see what their students do before they can get started, they can. And so, and learn about Canvas at the same time. And so just like any website and any online learning course, there's all sorts of modules that you can learn, that you can go through. And you can make it look nice and pretty, or you can just get right onto the core of things, which is kind of what Moodle and Google Classroom have done for us in the past. And so students would come in here, see what work they had to do, come in and click on it and go through the course. And so, but I just wanted to show you guys what this looked like. You know, it's got all sorts of options built into it. We can do assessments through it. We can actually connect assessments and different activities to our learning standards and actually see that rather than just appear a grade, you can connect it to those learning standards as well and keep track of that on both an assessment side and just see how the kid's doing in general. And so what's really great is parents will also be able to log in and we will be sending that out this summer, probably right before school starts, how to log in and then they can see better than what they can in Google Classroom and Moodle, what their students are doing. And so not only that, but the notifications and updates for students and teachers and parents all work really well. All three groups actually have their own app that they can download and use and it'll give those notifications whenever things are late, if you're a parent, or upcoming. And it's all customizable too. So if a student doesn't want to get them, they kind of can turn that off a little bit, but parents for sure can. And so, but if you guys want to know more, I can give you a little bit deeper dive, but it's all, all of our courses are already uploaded to it and they can all connect via Google. And so it's all ready to go. Talks to Infinite Campus. And so anything we do in here can automatically be pushed to the gradebook instead of having to duplicate all of that work, which we're already starting to roll out with some of the other things that we have. But that's going to be a huge time saver for our teachers. And so also a huge time saver is that everything we have in Moodle can just, I mean, it took less than a minute for me to take a fairly sizable class and throw it in there. And so really excited about that. And then anything that we've done in Google Classroom can also be put directly into this. And so a lot of, a lot of work has been done this year virtually and, you know, there's going to be a little bit more work to get it in here, but once it's in there, you know, they'll be ready to go. Does anyone have any questions?
I will just share, I'm thrilled to see this. I have two students in college, both at different universities, both use Canvas. And so I don't know how universal it is, but to have two students at two completely different universities, one private, one public, and both of them using Canvas, having our students be used to this as they transition, those who are going to go to college, I think is very beneficial. So I'm thrilled to see this.
Yeah, most of the universities that our kids go to have started to transition to it. CMO started this last semester and a lot of high schools are doing it too. Like everybody's leaving everything else and coming to Canvas because they provide what others don't. And so.
Any other questions for Mr. Russell? Thank you for the update. Before we move on to our next report, I believe we have a terrific tiger that has come in. So let's recognize our Clifford Terrific Tiger. Mr. Cook, if you would.
Yes, sir. One moment. Is this Jaden Handy? So Clifford Elementary, Jaden Handy, fourth grade, son of Stacy Matthews and Terry Handy. Jaden is an amazing young man. He's easygoing and kind to everyone. He can always be counted on to use his gir behavior and go safely, respectfully and responsibly. He's kind to students and teachers. Jaden is a great example of a terrific tiger. Way to go, Jaden. Keep up the good work.
Good job.
All right. Our next report for this evening is from our Community Teachers Association. Good evening.
Thanks. Hi. I realized a lot of times I've been like, oh, go over me, because so many things have been canceled. You know, everything's been, our big things have been canceled. And I realized, you know, it's not just big things. I mean, I'm a voice of the teachers and there's so many other things I can tell you about besides the big things, even though they've been canceled. I think one big thing I want to say is kind of a celebratory thing. Teachers were super concerned about the transition back, so many students coming back in January and just a lot of concerns about that. And then I said, well, how'd it go? And everyone's like, it's good. I hope that's true. I hope that that is absolutely true. So I think that's a celebration when it comes to everything we've been dealing with and just all the stress with that, that it seems like it's really going well to have brought these students back in. So I think that's something to celebrate. So two things that we're kind of meeting about now, one is we're starting scholarships. CTA gives three scholarships out every year. So we're sending out those forms. We give one to a high school student, one to a child of someone who works for the district and then for a district employee. So we're getting that started and rolled out for this year. And then the second thing is something I think you guys already know about, and Dr. Glass sent me an email about to encourage us, is we're really trying to call our senator and write letters and things against the Senate Bill 55 and all of that that was rolled into that bill, a lot of things, but really especially the charter school aspect of that bill. So we are, as a CTA, trying to, you know, contact our legislature. Usually there is a Capitol visit. Again, that's been canceled because of COVID. Usually we go there. I go, the last two years I've went and talked in person, but we don't have that chance. So trying to make sure we're calling and emailing and things like that. So that's kind of what we're centered on right now. Thank you.
Any questions for CTA?
Helen does a great job and I really appreciate her work with the CTA and her relationship with me. We have a great working relationship and look forward to finishing out the school year.
Thank you. I have enjoyed it more than, it sounds bad, more than I thought I would. But it's been, not with you. I realize that. I stepped in, I didn't say this, I stepped in when there was, you know, it was, it was an interesting step in and it was just, but it's, you know, this has been a hard year, but yet, you know, in some ways, a lot of, I have a lot of joy about this year because of just what we've worked through. So I guess that's what I'm trying to say. Don't hold that against me.
Next up, we have our treasure and finance report.
That's me.
That's you.
I want to roll back real quick. I tell you what, a lot of you don't know how many hours Jamie Russell puts in, but he is phenomenal at what he does. I mean, we couldn't do half the things we do around this district without him. And the reason we were so successful with the virtual school is because of him and I don't give him enough gratitude, but tonight, it's yours, buddy. So you can't ever leave me. Treasure and finance report, beginning fund balance at December 1st was right at 6.1 million. Started to get our taxes in, so that revenue increased. We hit a fund balance of 12.3 million. We'll see another big deposit in January and then it'll start to tail off again. I did, as I was reading across here, I did notice a huge fund balance in the 2015, 2016 bond funds, which was three cents. I don't know where we're going to spend all that, but no, that's, you know, when we, that's one of the tricks when you're trying to, when you, when you sell your bonds and then you go to spend your money is you try to get your checkbook down to zero perfectly. And so we got it closed, but we didn't get it exact, so we were left with three cents in there. But anyway, cash investment details listed below, 25.908 million, which reconciles with the total in fund balance at the end. So any questions on that?
Mr. Crowe couldn't find a Crispito holder or something like that.
I think he's struggling with the three cents.
Any questions regarding the finance, treasure report? Next up, we have our support services report.
Good evening. Update on Jefferson, we're still having meetings, meeting with city staff, fine tuning the plans. It keeps going back and forth between revisions and then back out to civil engineering and M&amp;P and then they'll suggest some changes and then it keeps, so it's kind of the ping pong game, so to speak, with going back until we finalize it. So we're getting a little bit closer on that. Because of that, it does kind of push the dates back a little bit, but expect that to be coming up here this spring pretty soon, where all of that will be in front of you and the big decisions to be made, so on and so forth. So things are moving along well. Again, we're lockstep with the city on that. They're having to time it as well too, because of College Street coming through, which is another project that the city is undertaking, but it's all, just a lot of different Lego blocks, so to speak, have to come together on it and it's coming out very nicely. Dr. Glass had mentioned earlier with the vaccine plan, just to let you know, and maybe you've already seen it once in the media, our high school has opened up as a vaccine site for the county health department. County Health Department does all the scheduling, obviously the workers, but Tyson Moiers and Nancy Scheller have done a tremendous job in welcoming them in. They love the facility because it's no curbs, all one floor, they don't have stairs, especially in these next couple of phases. So if you see things out in the community about the high school being a vaccination site, that is accurate and we're enjoying that relationship we have with the county health department and allowing those resources to benefit the community. Moving on, there's a couple of items under the safety, security heading. One of those I just want to bring to your attention is raise the age. This is a law that was kicked in back in G-. This is a law that was kicked in back in January and we're having some difficulty with it in our area as far as how it's being implemented with the the police department, the court and our school and the juvenile office. Mr. Cook has been to a couple of meetings that we've had where it's been discussed. There are conversations taking place at the county level and the state level, so if you see those coming across your desk. Basically, what it stipulates is that juveniles are not juveniles, but juveniles should open up for those individuals at 17 years of age to remain within the juvenile system and not go to the adult system. Problem is, it's an unfunded mandate. Juvenile says they have no no budget, no resources for it, and everybody is kind of expecting somebody else to to pick up the slack, but there is no slack to be picked up and so everything is is sort of in limbo. The approaches that you see across the state and all the various different municipalities are from one end of the spectrum to the other. And I will say that Cape Girardeau is still working through those. There are meetings that are taking place between the various entities on trying to come up with a workable solution. The ultimate solution, though, will have to come through the legislative process and we are having communications with our state reps and state senators on hopefully getting something fixed this session. So, questions?
So in Cape County right now, if a 17-year-old's arrested, where do they go?
Well, it depends if it's in the city or in the county. If it's the city, Cape Girardeau Police Department obviously still deals with that, you know, and the county, they're working with juvenile. Juvenile is still kind of going through their process, but I don't want to speak on behalf of the Sheriff's Department nor the Police Department, so, but there are still obviously safeguards in place in our community. You know, if if somebody makes a poor choice, there is an avenue, you know, that's still in effect for those individuals.
Any other questions? Thank you for the report. Next up, we have our Board Reports. First up is MSBA Delegate Report.
Nothing this month.
Okay. And next is Legislative Report.
Just forwarded you guys the information on Senate Bill 55. Again, that's school board recall elections, educational scholarship accounts, expansion of the existing charter school system that's in St. Louis and Kansas City to Cape's actually one of the counties that or districts that could be impacted by that if it does pass. Turning mocap into virtual charter school system. Homeschool students allowed to participate in MSHA. It's kind of interesting if a district does not allow homeschoolers to participate, then they lose their funding. And then limiting state bond, State Board of Education terms. So a lot of really big things that just kind of got jammed into a bill really quick, all in the name of let's get it passed before COVID shuts Senate down kind of stuff. So anyhow, just read up on it. Also, in that email I sent you guys, there's all the other legislation that they've got their eyeballs on. You know, and I did talk to the MSBA people about the Raise the Age and it was interesting because none of them had even, it was on nobody's radar whatsoever and said, you know, it's got pretty decent implications. We have a lot of 17-year-olds that, you know, thankfully, not all of them have to deal with that, but it's pretty big, so.
Do you want to have any questions? Next up, we have our Cape Public School Foundation Report. Ms. Amy McDonald. And she's bringing a big check.
Yeah, a big check. I just really came to share some good news. So we've we've had several things going on in the foundation office. Thanks. I'm not sure I need that. I usually carry it pretty loud without it. First off, we wrote a grant and I I want to thank Rayanne. She helps me with my grants. We work good together. She proofs them. We we talk through. She helps me with some wording and we work on several for the district and for the foundation together. And we did a joint grant. The district did not get funds, however, the foundation did. And that was what this is. This is $7,500 from Amrit Cares and it is for JE to pursue reading excellence, to help our students that are below reading level to come up to reading level. So it's going to provide some extra funds for our teachers and whatever they need to do to help our students with their reading. So that's super exciting. And that was Amrit Cares and Community Foundation of the Ozarks. And I think most of you know, the foundation does house some of our money with Community Foundation of the Ozarks. I feel like my mask, every time I talk, slides down, so sorry.
That's quite a good point.
So, and we also, I wrote a grant and got money for our Tigers at Home. And I've had fun working on trying to figure out how to spend that and finally, I've I've spent it all. So we bought Home and School Connection in English and Spanish that's getting sent home with all elementary students. Then we have 80 of these for five, for one a month, so I, whatever that math is. They get the world, Japan, England, France, and Italy. And this is a kit from Kiwi Company and I brought one just to show you. I thought it was really neat. So this is, I'm just going to take that off because it's bothering me. This is from Japan and it comes with an envelope that has, you know, Japanese on it. And the teachers all have this kit so they can work on lessons with the students. And then it comes with some crafting, some do it at home things. So the students that are at home can do some learning from around the world and learn about things from other countries. So I I thought those were really neat and Tina Rusler helped me plan those and pick these out and so that was exciting. We also did secret stories apps. We bought 165 license for Jefferson Elementary. So that was a part of the helping our JE students come up to reading at grade level and helping our teachers get that taken care of. So next on my is the Penguin Party. That is February 13th. We are having the Penguin Party. It is very important to me that we stay at the 200 level. 200 people can attend. We are doing tables of six. I am not taking any money at the venue. Everybody has to be prepaid, so there will not be a check-in. Everything, the glasses and everything will be on the tables, auction cards. All silent auction items are to be picked up at the business that donates them or scheduled at my office based on what the business prefers. But my idea was to hopefully, if a business donated an item, then if somebody bought it, they may actually find something else at the business and it might just increase their traffic as well. So supporting local and supporting the people that support the foundation. And I just want to tell you, because I'm having the event, I already have probably about 30,000 in corporate sponsors. So not having the event, I would not have gotten that money. So and we are putting in back into the district between 200 and 300,000 a year, thanks to our generous community and grant writing. And so I just wanted to share some good news tonight, so thank you.
Anyone have any questions regarding the foundation? Hopefully, if you haven't been to a Penguin Party, this will be an interesting one to go to. It's a lot of fun things and still having a live band and, but it's going to be a lot of fun. And if you choose not to go to the event, you can choose to host a party at your house. So if you have friends and family that's more comfortable in a smaller, more intimate gathering, you can contact the foundation and they can set up a Zoom Penguin Party party at your house. So and I believe they've got a couple of those set up already as well, so different options out there. All right, next up, we have approval of consent agenda items this month. We have minutes of previous meetings, December 14th, 2020, payment of bills and prospectus for literature and film. I believe that's at the high school?
No, Central Academy.
Central Academy, okay. All right, so those were sent out. Anyone have any questions regarding those? Questions? I need a motion to approve consent agenda? Jeff and Lynn? Discussions, questions, comments? Hearing none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those items are approved. And this month, we have no business items. And are there any information or proposals from board members? Anyone have anything? I just have one quick reminder for the board. So MSBA requires all board members to have a refresher course and it's a one-hour refresher course. And I believe just five of us, since you two are brand new and just went through certified board member training, you don't have to be there, but we're going to try to do it at our work session next month. So if we can show up like 4:45, get logged into that, we can knock that out within what?
Next month.
Yeah, we talked about this. We'll work it out.
How are the instructors?
It'll be a long one for me.
Okay. We were trying to keep it from being where we had to have a separate meeting, but...
Well...
It was your idea. I thought it was a good idea, but...
Hang on a minute. Wait a minute. I'm going to get out of line.
It was going to be a separate meeting that you all were going to do and then it's just all changed. It's all right.
Okay, we'll figure it out. Anyway, before March 1st, we have to have this refresher course, so, but we thought we could all do it at one time for a one-hour course and be done with it, so.
You were going to like popcorn.
I wasn't going to be here. I don't know.
Anyway, we'll work it out. Sorry. Didn't mean to cause Beth stress.
No, I don't.
All right. If there's nothing else for the board, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So much.
Move second.
Jeff and Lynn, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?